Good evening. I called to order the school committee meeting for the evening of Wednesday, October 9th. I'd like to say the pledge of allegiance, please. This meeting is being recorded this evening, and we would like to know if anyone else in the audience is recording. Thank you. I'd ask Sarah to please take a roll call.
Mayor View, Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Barcello.
Present.
Mr. DePaola.
Here.
Mrs. Pratt. Mrs. Schofield.
Here.
Mr. Shumsky.
Here.
Mr. Lamath.
Here.
Mr. Gerard.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mrs. Loebz.
Present.
Mr. Zatella.
Yes.
Ten present, two absent.
Thanks. I would ask for a moment of silence that will be observed for those who serve in the military and for others who help protect us. Thank you. May I please go around the room and ask for public announcements by committee members? I'd start with Mr. Gerard, please.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a moment and recognize the comp soccer team. They're having a tremendous year. They're 13-0 and 1. Recently, not their past game, the game before that. The game was 2-2 with seven minutes left in the game. And my nephew Kyle snuck the ball by the goalie in the meantime, collided with him, and suffered two major broken bones in his leg. So I just want to let him know that we're thinking about him tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wagner?
Thank you. I'd also like to echo the sentiments of my uncle over here, the member from Ward 8. Chickaby Comp Soccer is having a fantastic year, and I wish my cousin a speedy recovery.
Mr. DePaolo?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Mr. Bernard?
All set.
Thanks. Mr. Barcello?
Yes, I have a few words. The Education Reform Act was designed to enable the school committee to function as an educational policy board, holding the administration accountable for meeting the standards and policies set forth by the committee. Therefore, I am requesting that Acting Superintendent Morton and his staff investigate the following concerns regarding administrative leadership at Chickaby Comprehensive High School and take the appropriate corrective action. Here are just a few of the issues from various school department members concerning the administration at comp. The principal does not believe in or support teachers. Principal is not visible, is reactive, not proactive, ignores sending contractually obligated notices to staff within an appropriate timeframe.
Mr. Barcello, I have to ask you to stop speaking, please. I got some advice from our attorney. I'll turn it over to Rebecca Bouchard, please.
I don't think we should be discussing a personnel matter on the floor at a school committee meeting, so if you want to bring your concerns to the superintendent, you're welcome to do that. But this isn't the right forum for that.
Thank you, Mr. Barcello, for understanding the situation.
That's the way I read the statement at the beginning, okay? There is nothing in school department law that states that I cannot state what I am talking about, okay? According to education reform. You're just trying to silence me because you don't want these people to hear it, okay? But this is coming from the staff at comp who is sick and tired of being mistreated.
Right. So this is not what we said at the beginning. This is not the forum for you to use. You can't take a personal matter into...
According to who? The Department of Education?
She's our attorney, right, Mr. Barcello? And we rely on her for our solid advice here.
Our lawyer can override Department of Education statutes.
You can't go after people personally. We're asking you to please...
Going after anyone!
We're asking you to please stop speaking this evening on that matter and to speak personally with the superintendent, which would be the correct way of going about the situation. And this is upon the advice of our attorney.
The cover-up continues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barcello. Mr. Lamath, please.
No comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Schofield?
I'll sit.
Okay, Mr. Shumsky?
Yes, I just have a few announcements. Tomorrow at 6:30 PM here at City Hall, we will be having the Neighborhood Traffic Watch for the Ward 6 Littwin School Neighborhood. I'm hoping to see some of my residents turn out in support of possibly getting speed tables into those areas and those streets. And I also want to talk about the Chickaby Spooktacular, which will be held on October 26th at Zott Park from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. It's a great event, and I'm looking forward to volunteering with the city council, and I hope to see everyone there. Thank you.
Mr. Zatella?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to turn it over to the chairperson, excuse me, the superintendent for public announcements, please.
The first announcement, I'll give myself a shameless plug and just say that Mondays with Morton's returns on Monday, October 24th. Just letting people know that the podcast returns. We haven't had an episode in a couple of weeks. And the second thing I would say, I'd like to introduce the Student Advisory Council. If you could come up to the microphone and introduce yourself and actually tell us what your goals will be for the upcoming school year. Good evening, Superintendent Morton, Attorney Bouchard, Assistant Superintendent Francis, and other esteemed members of the school committee. Our names are Joel Forsen and Caitlin Jenko, and we are members of the Chickaby Student Advisory Council. We are here with some of our members and one of our advisors, Dr. Rebecca Petrikowski from Chickaby High School. Our other advisors, Mr. Jeffrey Bouya from Chickaby Comprehensive High School, and Mr. Evan Rodriguez from Chickaby Academy will attend future meetings with us. We were all elected by our respective student bodies. This year, we are excited to have five voting members, two from Chickaby High School, two from Chickaby Comprehensive High School, and one from Chickaby Academy. The elected members are Inalise Diaz, Jovante Gonzalez, me, Joel Forsen, Caitlin Jenko, Najah Wilson. And we will also have four additional alternates who will participate in our meetings and are excited to support our initiatives. These members are Duane Barker, Zadriana Sintran, Maria Ferretti, Kiara Hayes, and Najah Wilson.
One of our next steps is to elect a president. We have had one initial meeting during which we spent time getting to know one another and discussing our priorities for this upcoming year. And we have also distinguished school-based issues from issues that affect all three high schools and have identified three priority areas that we will start with. The first is that we plan to survey students on their opinions related to mid-year and final assessments, and we will then report our findings to the District Assessment Committee. The next thing is that we want to work with the Chickaby Fresh to explore ideas for options related to school lunch, such as separation of foods for students with dietary restrictions and/or different food deeds for religious health or dietary choice. And the final is that we also want to explore the feasibility of a later start time for a high school student in Chickaby. And we are excited for this year and look forward to representing the students in the high schools this year. If you need anything from us, please feel free to reach out to any of our advisors, and we will be happy to help.
Thank you.
If you would entertain a question, please, for Mr. Lamath?
On the later start time, have you guys decided on a start time that would be a target, or are you just going to survey to find out what that would be?
We had thought of at least maybe four to five minutes later, only due to with Chickaby High having DuPont starting at the same time, so their traffic gets really backed up in the morning. And 7:45 for Chickaby Comp as well, not really so much from Bellamy traffic, but there is that problem as well. But we also have, we're still adjusting with the Yonder pouches, so we have some students still coming in. And we also have the problem of the adjustment from 7:00 AM to allowing students in the building to now at 7:10. So some students, they're staying out.
So 7:45 is the time that you're targeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's pretty cool.
Mr. Gerard?
Thank you. I'd just like to make a comment and thank each and every one of you for being involved, for being role models to other students, and trying to make, you know, the schools safer and more enjoyable for each and everybody involved. So, great job. Thank you.
Mr. Wagner?
Thank you guys very much for coming here tonight. For those of you who don't know, I was on this board last year, and we tried to bring the students' interest to the school committee whenever we could. So I look forward to seeing what you guys do. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening, school committee members? Mr. Shumsky?
I just want to say thank you guys for coming out. I appreciate hearing your input and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good job.
We're going to move on to open public input, and we have Lisa Benvene who signed up to speak this evening. Speakers shall properly identify themselves with their name and their address. Public input sessions have a time limit of 30 minutes and/or a time limit of three minutes for individual speakers. Speakers will be chosen on a first-come, first-served basis, and we are going to ask no character associations and/or derogatory attacks, but will be tolerated. Thank you. Welcome.
Lisa Benvene, 34 Everett Street. First, I want to say that these young men and women did a great job tonight, and you should be proud of yourselves that you're being involved. There will be a vote tonight on the first step in the process to purchase 350 Memorial Drive to house the school administration, which is currently at 134 Dulong. In September, Superintendent Morton outlined the spending of the district's ESER funds. The city received 22.3 million in ESER III funds. In September, the district still had 18.5 million in unspent funds. Mr. Morton's vision for the third round included financing, financing social, emotional programs, facility improvements, safety upgrades, additional staff, et cetera, to combat learning loss caused by COVID. In September, Mr. Morton was not talking about using the district's ESER money of approximately 8 million on purchasing 350 Memorial Drive, the grandiose building currently owned by Mass Mutual, that was used as a corporate learning center with plush furniture and all the accoutrements of corporate executives and visitors expect. The superintendent and the director of maintenance spoke at the facilities meeting of their vision of all that could be done with this building, including an ever-changing list of potential tenants for the extra 50,000 square feet, and how it's not going to cost the Chickaby taxpayers since ESER money can be used. If you do the math, you know, approximately 8 million divided by the 18 and 1/2 million is 40% of the ESER funds, 40% of the remaining ESER funds granted to the city to lessen the impact of COVID on learning that would be used not on the children, not on improving services, not on improving school facilities, not on hiring additional staff to enhance social, emotional services for the children. Instead, we are to believe that investing and purchasing a building for administrative staff that is more than 3 and 1/2 times the size of the space occupied on Dulong, which according to the tax assessor database is only 20,620 square feet, that we're going to use 40% of the ESER funds, instead of investing it in the space that the children occupy on a daily basis. And it's interesting, because even before COVID, the district was getting funding under the Student Opportunity Act Plan to address gaps in subgroups that are not meeting state average high school graduation rates and the higher dropout rates, including comments in that study and in that plan, which is dated May of 2020, so well before we had the big problems with the pandemic, about social, emotional issues. So we've gotten funding for that, and we're getting more funding for that, but we're going to spend it on the building. We know the conditions at Anna Berry School are a problem, because it's been talked about for years. And I know you guys are in the process, which everybody is glad to hear, about this with MSBA, but it's not a done deal. And the director of maintenance has been quoted in the paper talking about the asbestos there, problems with the windows. Teachers aren't opening them. There aren't any air conditioning. And I understand at the facilities meeting and at the education meeting, where it was said, you know, you don't want to put money into Anna Berry or into Bellamy if they're going to be built sometime, but there has to be stopgap measures. You were given funds from ESER to make conditions better for the children. So I'd like to see the ESER funds being used for that, because this is taking money from here and there, and it's not free money. And I believe you need to do a capital expenditures approval to use this federal funding. That has to go to ESI. That has to go through DESI. Has that been done? And are the community stakeholders aware of this change of plans in the use of the monies? Thank you.
Hi, Mrs. Loebz, this is Mary Beth Costello on Zoom. I was wondering if I could say a few words under public input?
Just one moment, please. Go ahead, Mary Beth. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to thank the individuals from the school committee that took the time last Thursday night to come to our education subcommittee of the city council. Mr. Sam Shumsky, Ray Schofield, Mr. Don Lamath were there to discuss education issues that are pending and facing our school district, that the city council wants to be totally aware of. One of the main concerns that was brought up that night was school bus safety. In fact, there are a lot of people in the city of Chickaby that have been caught not in compliance with school bus safety, going around school buses when their lights are on and the alarm is out, the stop alarm. So this is something that we're working on. The state of Massachusetts, through the legislative branch, is also working on this. So we're hoping that some ideas can come forward, perhaps cameras on the arm of the school bus stop signs, whatever it takes. More safe when it becomes a problem, and school buses are a problem if people aren't in compliance. This week is National School Bus Safety Week, so I'm asking the public to be aware of school buses, honor the rules of the road, and have our children be safe. Thank you, Mrs. Loebz.
Thank you, Mrs. Costello. Any more public input this evening? Okay, good. We're going to move on to visitors, and there are none scheduled. So we're going to move on to our first order business, which is approval of minutes, 22-10-11.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting that the school committee held on October 5th, 2022 be approved.
Mr. Gerard?
Motion to approve.
That will be a hand vote. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carried. 22-10-12.
Report on personnel action taken. We have one retirement, James Horniac, craftsman, maintenance department, 11 years, effective 10/14/2022. Thank you for your service to the Chickaby Public Schools.
Mr. Gerard?
I'd just like to take a moment to honor Jim Horniac. Jim was one of the best at what he did. I'm glad to see that, you know, hopefully we'll have those same trades being offered, you know, in our programs, because, you know, there's just none of those guys out there anymore to take care of HVAC and refrigeration, things like that. So Jim, I wish you much success and luck in your retirement. I know you won't ever stop completely, but great job for our city. You're an amazing asset. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we don't need a motion there. No vote taken. We're going to move on to new business, please. 22-10-13.
Move that the bills warrant S100722 totaling $320,162.11 be approved.
Mr. Wagner, can we please have a motion?
Yeah, motion to approve.
On that motion to approve, Mr. Zatella, can you please read the warrants for the...
Shirley, there are two warrants totaling $968,054... $500... $968,054.71. I will read the total of the two warrants, and then we will act successively on those two warrants. Athletics, $34,765. Food services, $195,522. General expenses, $183,022. Grants, $127,432. Maintenance, $149,366. Utilities, nothing. Special education, $268,874. Student activities, student activities, $6,555. Transportation, I'm sorry, student activities, $268,874. Transportation, excuse me, was $6,555. Telecommunications, $1,944. Tuition refunds, $1,904. Sales tax, $595. And reimbursements, $595, again, for a total of, for the two warrants, $9,68,055.
Thank you. On that motion, any questions or concerns? Okay, thank you. I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. DePaola?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Nine yes.
And the motion passes. 22-10-14.
Move that the bills warrant S101422 totaling $647,092.60 be approved.
Mr. DePaolo?
Motion to approve.
On that motion, roll call vote unless there's any questions. Mr. Bernard, you're all set? Any questions or concerns? Okay, thank you, Sarah, please.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. DePaola?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Nine yes.
And the motion passes. 22-10-15.
Move that the second reading of the following policies be approved, as recommended by the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee. A, Fiscal Management Goals, D1. B, Annual Budget, D2. C, Transfer Funds Policy, D3. D, Federal Fund Supplement, Not Supplant Policy, D4. E, Authorized Signatures, D5. F, Collection of School Funds by Employees, D6. G, Audits, D8. H, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting, D9. I, Payments, D11. J, Petty Cash Accounts, D12. K, Revolving Accounts Policy, D13. L, Expense Reimbursements, D14.
Excuse me, can we please get a motion, please, Mr. Bernard?
Like to make a motion to approve, please.
Thanks. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wagner, please.
Yes, as I said a couple of weeks ago during the last meeting when I gave an update from the Policy Subcommittee, the majority of this is just cleaning up language and simplifying it and bringing us in line with other district policies. There's no major changes.
Thank you for that explanation. Anyone else on this motion? Sarah, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. DePaola?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Nine yes.
And the motion passes. We move on to 22-10-16.
Future location of school administration offices.
I'd like to turn over this presentation to our superintendent, please. I'd like to turn over this presentation to our superintendent, please.
So good evening, everyone. So just the presentation about a possible future location of the school administration offices. We currently reside at 134 Dulong Circle and I'll just go to the presentation and they can ask questions either before or during or whatever it may be. But just to give a little background on the move from 180 Broadway to Dulong Circle, one of the reasons why or many reasons why we moved along was poor ventilation in that building. That was the oldest building in the city of Chicopee, not easily accessible. It was not ADA compliant only with the lift, so with the lift it was ADA compliant, but it still was kind of a hardly accessible building for people with physical disabilities. Utilities expense, poor insulation, deterioration of the roof, high cost of maintaining the building, insufficient capacity, many district personnel offices were displaced into school buildings, so all of our district personnel people were not under one roof and sort of we can provide the support that was necessary to the schools. Insufficient capacity, as I said, no space for trainings or staff orientations or meetings or et cetera. We do have some of that space that currently at Dulong as we speak right now, but we're actually running out of space there as we speak too. And there's additional safety concerns at 180 Broadway with the snow and the bricks falling off the building during certain times of the year, so this is the reason why we went to Dulong Circle. So we talked about what Esser funds are. So we had a series of questions that we go through and answer, what can these funds be used for? Well, the Elementary and Secondary Education Act Relief Act, which is Esser, provided emergency relief funds to school districts to address the impact of COVID-19 that has had and continues to have on our schools and the Chicopee Public Schools. So we had three different Essers, there's Esser 1, which is Corona's Aid Relief and Economic Securities Cares Act. So these are some of the expenditures we already currently have spent Esser 1 on, Esser 1 has been spent. So we spent 30% on administrators, teachers, special education teachers, nurses, and paraprofessionals. We spent it on Chromebooks, light to night boards, laptops, and some licensing, which is 14.8%. Online assessments and content, specific platforms, curriculum, we spent 32.2%. And then obviously the rental office, we pay a lease at Dulong Circle, which is 9.6. That lease is $280,000 a year that came out of Esser 1. So for Esser 2, which is the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplementary Appropriations Act, it's provided to help safely open schools when we came back from remote learning and is to measure and effectively address significant learning loss during remote learning. We also were given $10,000 extra for student mental health. So these are some of the things we spending on administrators, teachers, special education teachers, paraprofessionals, 22.7. And I will point out within this particular piece, we have a social emotional director that we hire for social emotional learning and this particular grant here. Contractual services, school repairs, we had upgrades in the ventilation systems in the school, 9.1%. Supplies and materials, Chromebook, school supplies for classrooms, physical education supplies, school safety and security, and this is where Yonder was purchased out of, 14.5%. Other costs included equipment, Apple licensing, building locks, we changed a lot of locks in our school, school safety and security with the cameras trying to upgrade and high speed internet filtering for 14.9%. This is where we currently are now with Esser 3. So Esser 3 is the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. Districts must spend 20% of the funding to address learning loss includes new maintenance of equity provisions. So 16% of this grant has already been spent for retention stipends for staff. So the projected expenditures moving forward, we're talking about additional programs and interventions to provide support to students for academic learning loss, 25%. Additional activities, programs, and interventions to support special populations such as students with disabilities, English language learners, refugees, McKinney Vento, foster care, and others, 25%. We are buying a curriculum, a social emotional curriculum out of the Esser 3 grant, which is called Trails, we'll be implementing in that this school year. And then the potential purchase of a newer administration building is 34% of just Esser 3, but 15% of the all Esser money received. How would this benefit students? So it's located on a PBTA bus line. Currently, if you know where Dulong Circle is, if you can find Dulong Circle, it is not on the bus line. So it's been hard for parents and guardians and caregivers to get there for central enrollment, but being located on the bus line will give parents access to central office and services along with them having more meaningful participation in the education of their children. Dedicated space for our 18 to 22-year-old special education program, allowing these students to have real-life experiences and acquire life skills by interacting with the public through being greeters and servers, working in the cafeteria. And this also will also provide us opportunities to establish wraparound services in the community with River Valley Counseling Center, Department of Children and Families, DCF, the Behavioral Network, to coordinate supports for students and their families for social, emotional, mental health concerns. And these hours that will be convenient for families at off-school time, because a lot of kids are missing out on counseling services and things of that nature because of during school. Yes, Mr. Shumsky?
Further, on the last few slides, when you gave the percentage, percentage digits, I can't speak, geez. Can we have the dollar amounts for these? Can, I don't know if you can maybe email them to us?
Yeah, I can, we can get the dollar, well, the 25% we won't know because we haven't spent these as projected expenditures, but we can kind of give you an estimate of what it would look like.
All right, thank you.
So the other part of it is relocation of departments currently in schools would free up space to expand educational opportunities for students. Example, if we move the IT department to this new building, it would allow us to expand additional shots like HVAC and plumbing at Chicopee Comp. An opportunity to open a welcome center for our English learner and refugee families. We currently have over 40 refugee families in the city of Chicopee, so they can have a preliminary introduction to the Chicopee Public Schools, so we can understand their needs before entering their respective schools. And this also gives the opportunity for central enrollment to expand to a true family engagement center for fostering stronger relationships between students, families, educations, and the community. One of the things we did, we have a Panoramic Platform, we did a survey, and one of the things is we seem to have very low family engagement in the city of Chicopee, and we're trying to figure out how to get to the crux or what the root cause is for lack of family engagement. So we were looking to, we have a family parent or family coordinator or parent coordinator to come into the district to help out with this particular piece. This is not something because of this building, but it's something we actually need. We want our parents, our guardians, our caregivers to be partners with us in education. We've been lacking that particular piece. They are an important cause that we need in order to move the district forward, so we're looking to build stronger relationships and stronger family engagement within the Chicopee Public Schools. And this will help us do this particular piece because we'd have office to expand into a true family engagement center. So one of the things is we keep talking about how big the building is. It is larger than where we currently are, there's additional space. There's a space on the one side that would definitely fit all of the central office there, then there's additional space we would be looking for to call a community wing. So as we said before, we would dedicate space to the growing 18 to 22-year-old special education program. We have 40 to 50 students in that program as we speak right now. At one time, at one point, it was like 10 to 15 students, but it's expanded over the years. So we also could expand central office to a family engagement centers I just now spoke about, to build better ties in the community and stronger ties with families. But also a creation of a welcome center for our English learner families and refugee families that provides translation and interpreting services so they can feel like they're more part of the community and part of the school district. Establish a coordinated wraparound community services with local agencies, we're looking for after-school counseling, DCF office, we also would probably sit on the next line, identified office for school resource officers too, so they can have after-hours too, because sometimes kids don't feel comfortable going to the school resource officers during the school day. We have office hours after school, so it would be a dedicated office there too. Then also we'd have a district store. All right, we have a poverty rate of 71%. We have 91 homeless students in our district. We have over 40 refugee families, so we'd have a district store for clothing items and other needed items for families and students too. We would provide for families, we've had families that have been burnt out, we provided clothes and things for them also too.
When you say store, this is not a store that these people are coming in to purchase. This is a store where it's a storehouse.
Correct, it's a storehouse where we would stock it with things that we have, hygiene products we get every year from United Way, we get the stuff the bus, backpacks, hygiene products, we get coats, backpacks, things of that nature. We also have donations for clothes, shoes. It wouldn't be things people have to come in and purchase, it would be things that we would provide to families in need.
Okay.
Also, we'd have a full-size kitchen and cafeteria that would allow the district to prepare meals for the community and for other community-related events. So any type of program we wanted to bring to there, and if anything before, we could possibly reestablish the senior lunches there if possible. We'd have to talk to Western Mass Elderly Care, but that would give us the opportunity to build those community relations too with our older generation within the city of Chicopee. This would provide hands-on training with this facility for our newly hired food service workers where they can get opportunity to hands-on training, and we can also get serve safe and people certified and serve safe and recertified in this full-size kitchen in the evenings, so we can provide training. It's also, this space would allow for private meeting areas for families during enrollment process, because where we currently are right now, when you come into our main office, central enrollment is right there and it's no area for families to have any type of private space to discuss any type of issues or even to complete paperwork. So in this private space, we'd have a kiosk of computers, we'd have a private space in order for them to have interpreters or translation, any type of paperwork help they would probably need, this would give us the opportunity to provide that. Right now, sometimes families don't have any type of privacy, it's all right there and have to take their paperwork home, even though they may need assistance with their paperwork for enrolling. Space to teach ESL, English as a Second Language and GD classes to our parents, guardians, caregivers, and community members, we could get the opportunity to do that for our families to build more community relations. We'd have meeting and training space for professional development programs and for subcommittee meetings and any other type of committee meetings. And other possibilities, we would have hearing and vision screenings at central enrollment. A lot of kids need hearing and vision screenings before they even start school or may need glasses, we could do this one-stop shopping at central enrollment if we had more space. I'll let Mr. Lamoth take this piece.
So why now? Well, when we moved out of 180 Broadway, the city council asked us to look into finding a permanent home. We looked into finding the home, we ended up with Dulong Circle, which is a lease, it's 99-year lease. We inquired about purchasing and we were told we could not purchase it. Current arrangement runs through August of '25. High probability the costs will increase because the rents throughout the country have increased. If taxes increase, it increases immediately. The cost currently is $280,000 a year. It's paid out of Esser monies, but the Esser monies terminate in 2024. After that, we can't use net school spending to pay the rent, so we're going to have to go to the city council to get $280,000 or whatever the rent is to pay for that like we do busing. So the question was, well, we're going to lose $280,000 out of the tax rolls, whether it comes out of the left or right pocket, you're still losing $280,000. Realizing the one-time monies that we have would make a meaningful lasting impact on the services to the families and a burden to the city, there is no burden to the city at this point because it's federal money that we have to use before '24. We went out for a request for proposal as we were told by the mayor we needed to do, and the only project that came back was 350 Memorial Drive. We haven't had anybody else come to us with a building that would meet, would be a suitable area for our school administration offices. I've had people ask me about potential schools. Well, at this point, we thought our enrollment was shrinking, but this year here we're still at 6,800 and we're starting to add preschools. One thing that we have gotten from a lot of our elementary school teachers is that they're currently in smaller rooms or closets, as we'd like to call them. One thing that COVID has taught us is that we need to space out some of these services and get them away from each other, and that would allow us to spread out some of the students in the buildings. And the Esser money can't be used for Annie Berry School to replace it because it would take more than two years to replace that building and the money has to be spent in two years. We're currently on, we're currently on track to have a phone call with the MSBA. At our last meeting, they told us that they would either invite us in this year or next, but it looks like they're going to invite us in and they told us it would be an 80/20 split. So we are looking to go forward with the Annie Berry School. That 20% split, though, would come out of tax money.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Shumsky, please.
So I have a few questions.
Your microphone.
Thank you. I have a few questions regarding the space. In previous talks, we have discussed city departments possibly coming over to that building. Have any city departments been approached to come over if we purchased it or the city council purchased it, sorry? And have we indicated, have any indicated favorable interest in coming?
We have talked about it with the mayor. Nobody is, we didn't approve to come over because we don't have a building, but we talk about Parks and Rec, we talk about Veteran Affairs. Obviously, we talk about IT coming over, but also Chicopee TV, which is owned by the city, would come over too, so it'll be something more accessible for the community to utilize would be Chicopee TV. But the police department definitely said they were interested if they could get an office there. I've talked to chief major about that for after-school for the resource officers, but obviously we have a partnership now with River Valley, so they're in our school, so that would be an easy piece to go there. And then DCF, we could probably, they've always wanted offices in the district, and then BHN, but we've approached some and talked about some city offices coming over.
Yeah, and has there been any work done on putting RFPs for interests in the rental space? Have any businesses decided to be renters of any space?
No, we haven't done anything that, we have not moved forward or anything like that because we don't have a contract, don't have anything, but we have not discussed that because it would be enough space for us if some of the community services we had and can rent space to them, along with having enough of a conference room to hold conferences and different things like that also too.
So what is it like your plan that, how long do you think it would take for us to fill that space?
If this is something that would go through, it's the will of the school committee and the will of the city council, then obviously I talked to Mr. Chapdallane, we probably could be in that building next year, would take a year's time to renovate, and then we would go from there.
Okay, so what's the cost to maintain this building compared to Dulon and Broadway?
It probably would be almost similar to Broadway, not Dulong, I think we can't count, it's a smaller space, so obviously it wouldn't, it would be similar to what the utility costs were at Broadway.
What was that number?
It's probably about $87,000 to $100,000.
Okay, all right, that's it, thank you.
Mrs. Schofield?
Well, actually, I had the same question as far as, had you reached out to DCF and had conversations with them with wanting to come over to the building?
We've had previous conversations with them, they wanted space in our schools before, but space is a premium, as you would know.
Yes, yes, I would. I wanted to thank you very much for putting this together, I thought it was very comprehensive and I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Mr. Gerard?
Thank you, I don't really have a question, I just have a few comments to make. I've seen some properties, pretty much all of them in the city of Chicopee, keep going up and up and up as the years go on, so I don't see this ever going down or getting any cheaper for anybody. And certainly, you know, we're renting a building over there now that, you know, is going to keep going up in rent year in, year in, year, you know, as we keep going on, so I just think it's a good idea to acquire this property. Certainly, we need some new trades in our high schools, that's a priority to me. You know, we definitely need to start training some of the future into some of these services that people are going to need to provide, or need to use every single day. And it sounds like, you know, there's a bunch of different options for the remaining space. Obviously, you know, that's just my feelings on this and obviously the city council has to take a look at it and in the end, it's their decision with the mayor, but I think it should go forward tonight and see where this plays out. Thank you.
Mr. DePaolo?
Thank you, just also a comment, I agree, I think this is a very holistic and cost-effective solution to a problem that isn't really going to go away. It's a matter of spending these federal monies now versus just prolonging that drip that will only go up to rent year in and year out. This is something that addresses both student needs, administrative needs, and community needs. Very clear to me, very wise solution, in my opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes, I agree with Mr. DePaolo and some of the other ones on the board here that this is a terrific opportunity for us right now. If we wait, and we've talked about this in other meetings, that if we have to purchase something three, four years from now, now that money's coming directly out of the city coffers, where this year's coming out of Esser money, not out of our pocket. So that's, to me, is kind of a no-brainer right there. And also... And also, sometimes we tend to look at things in a short-sighted view. That, you know, okay, maybe something doesn't meet our needs at this moment. But we got to look at the future. And this building gives us an opportunity and our superintendent did a great job giving us some ideas of what we could use the building for. And that's just what we're thinking about at this moment. I mean, there's so many other opportunities that we're not even thinking about that we could use this for. And I hate to see us pass this up and then down the road, we're sorry that we didn't do this. I think it's a great thing for our city. It's a great opportunity for our city. I hate to see it go away and we don't use it and then be disappointed. So I'm hoping that the city council is listening to this and they kind of agree with us because it's a no-brainer in my view.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes, thank you. I recall asking it during the tour, but I can't remember the answer. What would the need be for additional maintenance staff, if there is any at all? Do we know that?
Yeah, it would be probably two to three. So we have one now that comes from Dulong. So it'd probably be additional two, one or two, which gives us a total staff of three.
Any other school committee members? Mr. Shamsky?
What exactly gets lost by spending Esser money on this? If we weren't, what would we do if we weren't purchasing this building with that money?
That's a very good question. I mean, we would come up with something. I mean, we have a, this Esser alone was fifty-six million. We've already completed Esser one. We're spinning down on Esser two. As was stated earlier, we have eighteen million left in Esser three, but we have plans for that. But in the midst, we're spending on curriculum. We just started, bought a curriculum for elementary schools, ELA. And then we also have a science curriculum, six through eights, we paid for. We're buying a social emotional curriculum. So we're buying different things. We've, we have, we bought safety and security equipment. We're upgrading our camera system, our locks. We have a lot of things we're spending on to make sure that it's invested in the schools and into the students also too. So, yeah, we would come up with a plan if it's not spent on that. But for about five million dollars was also put into Esser three, talking about school facility upgrade and things of that nature. So we've invested in putting ACs in every classroom and every building within our, in the district. And there's a plan and we're still on track to do that. That plan got sidetracked because of COVID because we started it pre-COVID. We just got a one million dollar grant for HVAC. So we're going to implement that. That's going to, you know, expedite the timeline on that. So we're working on things to make sure we upgrade and keep our buildings in good shape regardless of the age of them. But as was stated earlier, we're in the midst of with MSBA for Berry. And then we're hopefully to get in something in MSBA for Bellamy. But even though if neither one of those happens, they're still on a plan to do some upgrades too also too.
So would we be using Esser money to renovate one eighty, or not one eighty, the Memorial Drive complex?
No. I mean, talking to Mr. Chapton Lane, that would be for the purchase. And we're willing to negotiate in the contract. So that price may even come down. But we'd have money built into the maintenance department in order to do the renovations. And speaking, not speaking for Mr. Chapton Lane, but in our conversations to renovate, it would cost anywhere from sixty-seven thousand to maybe about, you know, eighty thousand dollars to renovate that building. It's in pretty good shape. It's about putting up some walls and things of that nature.
So could we possibly take funds out of our rainy day fund if we needed to?
We'd have to come to you all for prior year, prior year's money to get allocation for that. But yes, we possibly could do that.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Superintendent. Mr. Lamoth, please.
I moved that the school committee requests authorization from the city council to move forward with the purchase of the property located at three fifty Memorial Drive.
Sarah, please.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. DiPaola?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shamsky?
No.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Eight yes, one no.
Okay, is there any new business tonight from members? I would just like to comment quickly. I would like to thank our administrators that were in the audience this evening or available via Zoom. Thank you for that to answer any questions. And I would like to also thank the Student Advisory Council for staying here and participating in the meeting by listening intently. Because when I was listening to, watching the superintendent, you were all listening very intently and that impresses me. This affects you, all of this. So I hope you learned a lot tonight. Thank you for being here. Any other new business? Mrs. Scofield, please.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Saul for being with us. It was a pleasure working with you.
Can I make a new business announcement then, I suppose?
I'm sorry. Well, I didn't know. I'm just, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So it's very bittersweet to announce and it's not a full announcement just yet. But my family and I are very likely going to be moving out of the city of Chicopee at the end of the month. So knock on wood. So as to not, you know, a deal has still has to go through for purchasing a house. But I've been in communication with the mayor and superintendent about this. So this may or may not be my last meeting. Very bittersweet and I thank everybody.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Lamoth, please.
I'd like to thank Saul for his service.
Thank you. Mr. Lamoth, please.
I moved that we adjourn.
On that motion, Sarah, please. Yes.
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 Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Nine yes.